The modification is done. Regional planning directed the applicant to apply for ministerial approval for their gas station convenience store and fast food, which means we'll never, just like the human, are best. It got approved six months before we even heard about it, you remember? So that's, we, so it's, and when the planner gave the presentation to the planning commission, she said, "We're gonna go through this and then afterwards, that's when they're gonna apply for a development project." So the development project is not part of what's in front of you, which is a complete, you all know what CEQA says, right? What does it say? No segmentation. Come on, say it with me. You can't split a project up into two smaller projects, process them both with CEQA exemptions to avoid the whole impact of the whole project. I mean, it's like, I, I, I don't know how many times we have to say this to them, right? And, and it's still going on. And her presentation, the planning commission, made a clear causal link between the ministerial gas station that they're gonna approve next, which we will never see and never know about, and the, the MAP recording.
So what would be our next step then, Jackie, for, for Afton? I mean, Mr. Hastings, Commissioner Hastings is supposed to be Supervisor Barker's representative for us. And yet, he apparently had so little experience that he just went the low road, or the high road, whatever you wanna call it, to say, "Oh, I have faith in the," so therefore it's going forward.
I can't speak to his experience. I don't know what he does for a living. I don't know if he's a planner, but I, I understand what you're saying. The only option left was to, and it was due today, file an appeal to the board supervisors.
Okay. So...
It's too late.
So does that mean that gas station is going in?
Well, maybe somebody else filed an appeal. I don't know. And if they did, then it will go to the board supervisors and we'll all have the opportunity to speak. I'll have to do some digging and I can contact Alita Luna. She's the commission secretary. The only other thing is, and this is, this is, this is, well, I, I, I don't know. I, I, it depends. They shouldn't be doing this as a ministerial approval anyway, because there were certain protections we have of the rural commercial zoning code that would preclude that, but they are ignoring all of those protections. We saw them do that when they came back with a notice of intent for the Primo Burger, right? We just commented on that four months ago. That's got the feed store, which we all supported, and then this drive-through fast food business. And in the traffic study that they did, they only considered traffic generated by the feed store. And the Public Works Traffic and Lighting Division signed off on it, saying, "There's no significant traffic and they don't need to do a VMT analysis because they only, there're only, there's less than 100 cars a day that's going to be generated." So in our comments, if you remember, we said, "100 cars a day from the feed store, agree." But what about the 2,300 cubs a day from the drive-through fast food business? That's all part of the same project. It's one subdivision. They never responded to that letter, never got back to us. Actually, we need to get back to them because I think we voted, and I have to, I'm sorry, this is something that falls through cracks. We voted to have a meeting with the Traffic and Lighting Division about that. So, so let's follow up on that because we'll find out. You know, and that's right across the street from this. So if, if somebody appealed, if some other person appealed, then I, I will find out. I'll make an announcement at the next meeting. It will probably go to the board in three months, usually. Three or four months, three to six months. And then we can all come down if that, that appeal has gone through. I suspect it has.
What if nobody appeals?
Huh?
What if nobody's appealed it?
Well, I will find out. And I'll put the word out to Ruthie that's, whether, I'll find out tomorrow if somebody appealed.
But if nobody appealed?
That's my question.
Then we're, then we're sunk.
It's a done deal.
Does it get? It's a, it's a done deal for the MAP and then they're just, the gas station will be done on the ministerial site plan review. We'll never see it. We'll never even know that.
It won't come out on the Intergov report?
I, well, see, that's the great thing. It already came out on the Intergov three years ago. That might still be a lie. That might...
Now, that got withdrawn. Under Epic LA, it was withdrawn. But if they resubmit, didn't that trigger Intergov?
Yes. No, well, no, if they submit a new application, it will. Look, they're still processing Primo Burger under the application that was submitted in 2016. So I don't know what regional planning's gonna do. But if they said, "Oh, well, we can rea-" if we can reactivate this withdrawn, if it's withdrawn, that doesn't mean it's been canceled or denied. You know, that wasn't actually, actually the applicant. I don't know what regional planning...
It's the equivalency of the jungle ball. You know, when you go to play volleyball and everybody just does their own rules and hits the ball however they want, does all these illegal hits. It's kinda like how this is all being handled. But we never get to touch the ball. We're the ones that are always slapping the ball. Never touch the ball. We have our possessions. They have all the power.
Okay, we have a comment?
The difference between a, a gas station there versus the other three is that there's a multi-unit apartment complex and there's only one exit and entrance to that. So if you had a fire there, they have no way to get out.
Oh, yeah, they'd be screwed.
I, I agree. And when you, when we try to bring that up, they say, "Oh, well, yes, it's a very high fire hazard area, blah, blah, blah." But the threshold is 50 and I think there's only 44 apartment complexes, 44 units. So I, I...
So it's no big deal. They can die.
Yeah.
They can burn.
They, they don't care. They want thousands of people to escape on Zulu Dan, Tulane Highway. All the campgrounds, all the people, all the, the only exit between Crown Valley, the other exit is Aguadosi County Road. So everybody in that area, Aguadosi, Acton, all on that Tulane Road to escape. I mean, if you thought what went down in Palisades was bad, those people leaving their cars and running, you gotta run 30 miles and so...
You know what that is? That's Palis-, um, not Palisades. It's the one up north that burned.
Oh, the...
Paradise. Paradise. That's paradise. That's what that is.
Well, and so, and, and that's what's frustrating to me because, you know, we live here and we understand the risk. But when you, you endanger us by permitting high density, many, 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 hundreds of people, thousands of people. By law, every campsite, under state law, a thousand trailers can support 10 people. That means 10,000 people legally could be there.
Wow.
So I...
The thing that I find is interesting is that when that subdivision first went through, that front piece of property, the apartments were gonna be in the back and then that parking's property was going to have office.
It was an office park.
And it was going to have parking. So it was very low impact, low density.
And you had a second driveway.
Right. And so to remove the, the driveway and the fire lane from that existing development is one thing. But then to now allow another development to go in, it's not consistent at all with what was originally approved. And that the use is completely different.
And that, that actually was a big part of what the town council said. It is now, you have to comply with your parcel map. The tentative map that was approved in 1993 on or about May 25th. We don't know for certain exactly when it was approved. You have to comply with that in your final map. You can't just... What the county said in the hearing package is they said, "Well, we should, we should change the li-" the lines they, so, okay. Under the California MAP Act, Subdivision MAP Act, and under Calif-, the LA County Subdivision Code, you can never change the recorded parcel map unless you make very specific findings. And they are very limited in when you can, what you can find. And one of them is, you know, you were not supposed to change, well, at least some of the driveways. You're not supposed to do, you know, and this is alliterating the driveways. Another one is it's supposed to be consistent with the tentative map. Well, this is completely inconsistent with the tentative map. But one of them was, um, shoot, there I go. Lost my turn to five. That, that was our testimony. You, you need to make these six findings and you can't make at least four of them. Really, arguably all six. No, that's another point that, um, well, now I can't remember what it was. But they, they do have to comply with tentative map. Oh, that, that was it. It's like, they, they had said, "Well, we make this finding because these driveways and fire lanes need to be removed because they restrict future development." And so the point is like, oh, I'm sorry. You know, we just approved a five lot, a minor land division, five acre lots, about eight months ago, right? And on that tentative map, it said, basically, five homes, right? Five single-family homes, right? And the final map isn't gonna show the homes, but the tentative map did. So you could see that there's a place in that area that's a pad and then meets the setbacks and then not the hillside and all that other stuff. So when that goes to a final map, those conditions on the tentative map still apply, even though you won't see them on the final map. And the reason for that is if you don't impose the conditions on the tentative map, then instead of one single-family home on each of those lots, there could be a 30-unit, 10-story apartment complex. Every, my point is every subdivision imposes restrictions on future development. That's the whole point of it, right? If it's a single-family subdivision, then that's what you gotta build after the map is recorded. That's what went down with this. It was an office park, three buildings, low-density office use.
Can you explain, 'cause I've heard it and you explained to me, but can you explain to everybody else how this subdivision was different because it was a lease project? And what restrictions are put on it because it was a lease project? And what a lease project subdivision is? So that they know why there's these encumbrances on this map.
Okay, so, so every part of a, of a lot that is going to be used for the purpose of sale, lease, or finance has to go through subdivision map, okay? And so, so for example, up there at Santiago, every, that, that went through a commercial subdivision. It was not a lease project because every single building is on its own parcel. You can't have, if you have more than one building on a parcel for a commercial subdivision, it has to be a lease project because otherwise you can't lease the second building for somebody else. You're gonna stay in the first building. You can't lease the second building. So a lease project means it's a commercial development. It's a subdivision with multiple billings on a single lot and it's called a lease project. So that's how you're able to get permission to lease the other, so you own one building and you can lease the other two to whoever because they aren't on their own individual parcel, right? So, so that's what a lease project is. And so when this was approved in the mid-'90s or early-'90s as a tentative map, that's when the discretionary process happens, that's when the hearing happens, that's when the CEQA review happens, all of it. That, that is when they decide what the use will be. And if you want to have more than one building on one parcel for commercial purposes, you have to go through what's called the lease subdivision process. And it's a separate, little bit different process from the other subdivisions because of the fact that you have multiple billings on it, right? So you also have to go through, it, it goes through the same process as a condominium project, right? Which is one building, but individual houses in each one. You actually have to do a subdivision, even though it's one building on one lot, because there's 40 dwelling units or however many dwelling units. So a condominium project, a community apartment, and a lease project subdivision all go through this sort of unique project, process, where you have to, in the tentative map, show the location of all the buildings, the driveways, and fire department has to say, "Yep, that's wide enough. Yes, you're good. Check. You're good, good, good," for all of this. And then when they go to the final map, they don't put the buildings on there, but they have to put the driveways and fire lanes on there because that is, was a condition of the approval on the tentative map. That's why these driveways and fire lanes are so critical on this map. And regional planning just erased them. To allow whatever the developer wants to.
A blank slate now.
With that, it's a completely blank slate. It, it, it is, it, it, there's... We did a public records act request, the town council, right? And you go through the records. Their own engineer was arguing with the county, saying, "We can't do this. This is not right. You can't, you can't do this," right? This was the applicant's engineer because the county wanted them to do something. He goes, "No, we need to do it this way." And they're like, "No, no, just do it this way." He's like, "I, I can't." And he ended up doing it anyway. But, but it's remarkable when you see a record. Now, he was saying he couldn't do it for reasons other than these, but the, the, his reasons were still legitimate, but they were surveyor arguments. You have to be surveyed to make those arguments. But anyway, it, it, it's just shocking. I, I don't...
So each one of the supervisors appoints their own commissioner, is that correct?
Yes.
So that doesn't mean that they're, I'm, I'm, guess what I'm hearing is, that doesn't mean that they're qualified or even know these...
I don't think any of them are planners. I don't, I don't believe so. I don't, I don't know. I've never done research on the backgrounds. But I don't, they don't strike these, they don't use planning language. So they don't seem to, I think that they're, and I'm not sure they're supposed to be. They're supposed to be intelligent, reasonable people who, you know, make the su- they're supposed to have their, their head in the community's game, not necessarily where their head is in our game.
You can see they're fully relying on staff.
Right, yeah. They're relying upon staff to make sure that they cross their t's and drop their i's.
And that's what he said, basically, what Hastings said.
I have complete faith in staff.
I have complete faith. Well, we don't have faith in you anymore.
Unfortunately, you know, the video's not up, so you can't go see it. It should be up within a couple of weeks, okay? And, and another thing that was kind of troubling is, you know, Director Bodak gave a report and everything was great about the Encata project, which was Encata, Intata, something like Entrata project. That was at Santa Clarita and that project got approved. And then she sat back and watched. And then they were talking about, the commissioners were all talking about, I think, the development for us. And Commissioner Hastings goes, "Well, you know, my boss is here." And he kind of points to Director Bodak. And I'm sitting here thinking, "She's not your boss."
Right.
His boss is Supervisor Barker. Well, yeah, I mean, like, they're supposed to be not... Director Bodak is, they're supposed to be impartial. I, I, I don't, they, I don't think they even seem to understand the Director Bodak. Unless, Chuck, I'm wrong, but Director Bodak is not the commissioner's boss. I was stunned that he said that. I'm like, so that's why, perhaps why he's so convinced. I, she left the room during our, during the hearing. Oh, yeah, she was there until our, our case came up. I, I'm sure she was in the next room listening, which is fine. I, I liked Director Bodak. I think she's really, I, I, I like, like, I wish she'd stayed, but that's...
I have a kind of off-the-wall question. And do we know what company is trying to put this gas station in?
Uh, we know, we know the names of the property owners and their address. They're in, I don't remember.
But we don't know if it's a...
And we know their designer. We know Rothman, I think, or something.
I was just curious. I was just curious.
We don't know.
It could be like, you know, like the Primo Burger. The people really driving that was Mr., not there, so, the Primo Burger guy. Not, not the gouty so much. So the driver isn't always the person who wants the property, right? So I don't, I, I already have to look it up. But it's, it, you know, if somebody has appeal, I'll, I'll let you all know. I'll confirm with Ms. Luna.
So we don't have till midnight tonight to appeal it?
It's five o'clock.
Yeah, it's always five.
And you have to pay 1,100 bucks to appeal. So it's not, you know, it's not, it's not, you know, it's nothing, it's not nothing, right?
Well, we couldn't do that.
Yeah.
I know we don't have that in the Cherokee account.
Well, and also, I mean, the hearing was on whatever, that Wednesday, and then we had the Thanksgiving holiday. It's like, it just, and, you know, the timing was terrible.
It should have extended that.
It, it shouldn't have continued that. I still don't understand when the new county council telling, "Oh, I can't answer that question." Yeah.
And he thought a, a big submission from Save Our Rural Town and also one from town council
Right.
that brought all these points forward. You would think they would, that it would take some time to look. Because I don't think they really understood the lease project thing. I don't think...
They were not given the one from Save Our Rural Town. They were not given.
They were not given that?
No. So, so that they, yeah, so the, the hard copy, hard copies were distributed there. So they couldn't even have time to look at them.
Well, exactly.
Except for a lot of the points, I'd say 90% of the points were raised in the letters written in June.
But would they have already forgotten what happened in June?
I don't even know if they saw the letters in June.
Correct. So Afton gets kicked to the curb.
I, I...
No, the curb is gone.
There was no curb.
The curb is gone. The food truck.
Yeah.
We're gonna move those food trucks.
Well, I, I, I will check tomorrow and see if anybody appealed and then, but you know, and you can put the word out.
Are you thinking somebody did?
Huh?
Are you thinking some...
I suspect so.
I, I, I think you know, but that's okay.
I, I suspect. I, I, until I get confirmation from Alita. But she's very nice, but you know what? Oh, well, you know, we didn't get that in time. We didn't see the email till after. Who knows what they're gonna say, so we'll find out.
But the commissioner sat there and didn't even get all the information for them to make a decision. So they just said, they passed it off?
Well, technically, they had it in front of them.
But they, they didn't read it. They didn't have time.
Well, the email came in. This is not, this'll be in the record, but it will not be given to the commissioners, so...
Wouldn't the fire department have to sign off on that?
The fire department did.
Yeah.
Which is remarkable. They signed off on everything spine because there's no development proposed. So here's, here's... I, I, so, okay, so this is one of the arguments the town council made. One of the findings you have to make is that there are physical difficulties, physical limitations on the property or technical difficulties that are beyond the developer's control and make it impossible to comply with the MAP, okay? That's a finding they had to make. So in order to make that finding, this, what the finding was that they adopted is, there's technical difficulties and beyond the control because they, because the fire lanes limit, limit development, right? Which is what I was saying. It, it, so it's completely non-sequitur. It's like, this is orange because over there it's, it's lime. You know, it's like, it, they're completely unrelated, right? So, so the town council pointed out, there is, there are no technical difficulties that prevent this lease project being built exactly as is proposed. There's no reason why you can't. Lots flat, that are just slightly sloped. There's no, I don't know, earthquake fault. There's no hydrology problem. There's no hillside problem. You can build this exactly as you want to, as, as you built. You just don't want to. So they can't make the technical difficulties. They can't make the physical problems, okay? So what they said is, the, the design, it's the design that's causing technical difficulties and physical problems for them to build what they want to build. But that's not how it works. If the land itself has to display the technical, you have to be able to not build this thing. So you're baiting them to change a few things so that you can build, you know, so they've completely abused the process. So they, they can't make that finding. And, and the fact that they can go ahead and build this as, as built, as approved, the tentative map, is proof positive. So they're violating, it's just shocking. And so if, if somebody appealed, it's gonna go before the board. And I think we all know what's gonna happen there. If Supervisor Barker agrees with us, the other four have to. Or at least two of the other four have to. So it might be a big, a big, big...
So what's, what's the process if it's appealed?
It'll go before the board.
And then we can...
In one length of time.
Probably anywhere from three to six months, would you say, Chuck?
I mean, oh, I have no clue. I'll bet you it isn't before three months, just I wanna fix that.
Yeah, probably three to six months, I would say.
Well, at least we give one more shot.
If, well, we'll see. I don't know. I mean, if regional planning decides they didn't see the appeal before five, maybe we won't. I don't know. I'll find out. I will find out.
So that is our update.
And it's shocking.
Yes.
It's shocking. I'm just sitting here with my mouth open. I probably look stupid. But I'm, I'm like, these people don't understand what they've just done to our whole community again.
They don't live here.
They don't care?
Or to lean a highway.
I, I just, I don't understand. I mean, how many times do we have to explain to them what CEQA says?
But, but it's fraudulent to me because they're, they're not planning to build what they initially proposed. So now we're going to deal with a completely different project.
The major switch.
And let me, let me say this also. When this tentative map is approved in the early-'90s, at the same time, this, that's when the Crown Valley DP was, the, the subdivision general plan was going on. And the Afton Town Council was all over that like, 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 like flies on a horse. So it's like, I mean, it, um... So I know the Afton Town Council at the time was very active in watching what was going on in that part of the community because of all the traffic and the problems. So, but that's the other problem. Regional planning has not pulled the original tentative map. So I am sure the Afton Town Council wrote letters. I am sure that they were very much, uh, and, and, I don't know, invested in this, this lease project and not a free-wastery business because that was how they rolled even in the early-'90s. That has not changed in 30 years, okay? I'm, no, I'm serious. Because I read the town council letters on the DP on the Crown Valley and I know what their position was, right? So, so it would be really hard for me to imagine that the town council in 1993 wasn't just as adamant about this. So, but they have not even pulled the file. They've never looked at the tentative. They've pulled, they, somebody in 2020 scanned like 20 pages out of the, and these files are this thick. I mean, it's not just a box that high. It's, this paper's this high. And they just did 20 pages and like, that's it? It's like, no, no subdivision committee meeting, no CEQA document? You have to, under CEQA, that's another thing. You cannot build a project that is inconsistent with the CEQA document that was certified when the project was approved. So we need that CEQA document. They should never have brought this to the commission without looking at the CEQA document. And planning never did. It's like a bunch of, you know, these are these sweet, young, 25-year-old kids.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I bet most of the staff was even born in 93.
I would say that's probably true.
See, there's a focus change. And then like 15 years ago, 20 years ago, the county used to be very much into controlling development and they wanted to be in control of everything. And now it's just stamping on through because they want revenue.
What they're doing, the fondest thought and archeity is unforgivable. They just wanna build one house on freaking 15 acres.
And that doesn't bring them any revenue.
Right, no.
It's about the projects that bring revenue. So...
Okay, let's move on to, Ruth was the last one to speak. Let there be the first one on this one.
Let me just move my name and show the way.
Oh, wait.
Yeah, anything with that one? My husband's gonna love me when I bring that one.
Okay. Take your time, Warren.
All right. Try to be organized tonight. So Jackie and I had an opportunity to meet with a reporter from Bloomberg News who engaged Jackie and asked to meet with us. He flew down from the Bay Area just for us, which I thought was interesting. So we interviewed with him and then Jackie took him on the Mr. Tootwell ride and all the backroads and showed him where all the best were gonna be. She was just a wealth of information. You know, she's almost like that cruise director on the riverboat at Disneyland. You know, jungle cruise?
Yeah.
She knew everything.
Seriously?
His head was spinning and I told him there would be a test afterwards. Anyway, real nice guy. He's also interviewing people from like in the Vacaville area. There's a best up there that's being opposed. There's one down in San Juan Campistrano. So he's kind of, I think he's gonna like roll this all into one big environmental article. And it's all based on the opposition to the best and why. Why communities are opposing.
That's awesome.
Yeah, we don't know what else is gonna come out, but...
Has he been to Montecarlo?
Uh, yeah, he's familiar. That's, that's his area. He lives up in, was that area?
I thought you said you were gonna go to the fair, but...
Yeah, so he's real familiar with the Elkhorn Slough and all that, where all the contamination was. Fullmark and county have not yet filed an appeal. We filed our final judgment in writ about, oh, about a week ago, I think. About a week ago, not, not filed?
We did, but...
Yeah. But now it's, I think the 30-day clock is ticking for an appeal?
Now, I understand.
Right. So we still haven't heard anything, so that'll be interesting. The Prairie Song Best is still in the application process. They just released their second determination letter. CEC sent their determination letter to the applicant and said, CEC sent their determination letter to the applicant and said, okay, this is where you're at, as far as your application being complete. And they still have items that are not complete, such as mandatory opt-in requirements, biological resources, land use and water resources. Unfortunately, they said that the community benefit agreement was complete, and they accepted a, as far as I'm concerned, bogus, um, agreement with a group called Los Angeles Orange County Building and Construction Trades Council, and it's gonna be for an apprenticeship readiness fund. Who the hell are those people? They're not acting.
Oh, I've talked to them. They're not, like, they have no members in act.
Yeah.
No.
But, but yet, CEC is gonna let that stand, as a community benefit agreement. So, anyway, th- this is one of several community benefit agreements they plan to execute.
They're gonna move the whole place down to where those guys are?
Could they please?
Yes.
Um, the CEC thus far has only approved one solar slash best project, through the eighty-two oh five opt-in program so far, and that's the Darden up in Fresno County. There are several large bests that are in the process, just like, uh, the Prairie Song is, in various stages of application, either submittal or, uh, in approval process. But, um, ver- most of them are being opposed. I would say that, I, I don't think I've really heard of any that aren't facing opposition, that are in communities, so.
Something that's interesting with that, though, and, um, I, I don't know how to, I don't know how to get a drill down on it, but, CEC is required to coordinate with regional planning, and get confirmation from regional planning whether or not this project is consistent with the county zoning code. And the applicant has claimed that it is. But what matters is whether or not regional planning has told the CEC that it is or isn't. And we can't seem to get to the bottom of that, we've done public records act requests to the county, they won't respond, or they said, no, you know, nothing's really happening. CEC hasn't posted anything about the, and they're not, secret communications, these are not privileged. You know, they're, they're subject to disclosure by the public records act. So, what's really troubling, though, is if you look at the LA County zoning code, it expressly, expressly prohibits energy storage devices as principal uses on agricultural zones. So, lack of height, which is very unusual, because the zoning code is what's called prescriptive. If the, if the use is listed, then you can do it, if it isn't listed, then you can't do it, that's how it works. So it's extraordinary that the zoning code would go, have not just adopted that model, but also said, they are prohibited. In A one, A one and A two. So, you know, if regional planning has told the CEC that they're allowed, that would be very troubling, because you're clearly not expressly prohibited in the zoning code. So we really need to find out, we need to get, maybe we need to talk to Chuck, we need to get, we need to know what regional planning has told CEC about the status of the project and its compliance with the zoning code.
But the zoning project is proposed to the county, and Prairie Song is the old of ours, right?
Yes. No, but CEC is required to connect with, get information from, and meet with regional planning to specifically discuss planning.
And the CEC asks regional planning, is this, is this implemented with the county zoning code?
And they had that meeting, uh, eight months ago. Right, it was in, my ma- oh, so, I'm sorry, five, seven, eight. And nobody's telling us anything, you can't seem to, so if you could help us with that, that would be greatly appreciated.
As they'll count.
Because I think we, as a community, need to know, I mean, if regional planning has conveyed to the CEC that this is perfectly legitimate, then, or it's compliant with the zoning code, then we need, we need to have a sit-down with Director Bodak and, and somebody from the press.
Yeah, if I remember correctly, that land is two zones, it's A one and A two.
Correct, but it's, it's prohibited in both.
The application cites the interpretation memo that was just decapitated in court on the Capitol.
No, no, it's still standing, it's still there. It still exists, they, regional, regional planning just approved another best in Castaia a few months ago, using that interpretation.
Yeah, but that was before the rulings, so.
Well, I know, but the rulings, what you'll have to do is sue up every single project.
Right.
LA County is not walking away from that interpretation. Even though the court has said, you, you can't do this, they just rolled the dice and figured that, well, maybe they'll sue us, and maybe they won't, fifty-fifty chance. They won't, right, so. So LA County has not released the, the best society ordinance, nor the REO renewable energy ordinance update draft yet. It was supposed to be out November, and it's not out yet. So, and when I reached out to the team that's developing that, um, she said it's coming, and she says, I'm more anxious for you to get it in your hands and get your eyes on it. So. I know they're working hard on it. Yeah, I know, they are. And they've been very good about letting us be part of the process, so, hoping that it didn't all fall into, so. And then we'll have a chance to provide comment once the draft is released. Um, and then the last thing is, um, Prairie Song has purchased a lot of property along Soladad, both sides of Soladad, starting at Melinta and heading north. And, part of that land that they've purchased is on the east, I'm sorry, the west side of Soladad, so between Soladad Canyon Road and the fourteen freeway. And what this does is it's, it's pinning the residents on Tortuga Street, because Melinta, here's Soladad, here's the freeway, and here's Melinta, and then Tortuga runs right, parallel to the fourteen freeway up here. Those people have always had to use, uh, access roads that run straight to Soladad, because Tortuga washes out with storms. And it makes it very difficult to navigate the road, even the trash trucks were using, um, the access roads. Well, now that the Prairie Song developer has purchased that land, they're trying to force these residents into fi- into signing formal easement agreements, and they also have a release of liability in the agreement. And, a resident reached out to me, and he's just concerned, because he doesn't know how far-reaching the liability release goes, he doesn't know if it's, like, anything in the future, or just this one, like, you use my easement road, and you, you know, roll your vehicle, you can't hold them liable, that, well, that would make sense. But if it goes beyond that, um, he's nervous about signing anything. So, I told him, um, if he could send his, his easement agreement, that he has not signed, to the town council, and then you guys could maybe look it over, and then maybe address the, um, CEC on whether they can, they're putting K rails in. So the Prairie Song developer has put K rails in to block off these access roads, to block off these easements. And the only way the people would be allowed to use those roads is, well, sign this agreement, sign this, sign this easement agreement. And totally, it's just scummy, and I don't understand why they're doing it now, because they're not doing any construction on that property, they can't. And the project is, it, at least ten months away from being approved or denied. So let, let, let me, just so I understand what you're saying. Developer is going to this property owner, saying, sign this agreement to sell your property to us, right? That's one. Okay. And they're saying no, so then the developer put out K rails and has now blocked their route?
Yes and no, okay, so, th- that's one layer of the onion, that, well, you know, you guys might, you know, they probably want us to buy you out, because you're gonna be basically looking at the back of a, a best facility with a fourteen-acre back and a best facility in front of you. And they're pinned between the two, real estate, right? So, they've all been given offers to buy out, but I don't believe anybody has signed a buyout offer yet.
Okay.
But the other layer of the onion is, that now their, their accessibility to Soladad Canyon has been cut off, and they want them to sign an easement agreement.
Okay.
And there's a, a release of liability in the easement agreement, and of course, this fellow that I was talking to, um, online, told me that he's just nervous about it, because he doesn't want it to release them from liability for everything going forward, like, you know, like, what if this applies to, if I do go to sell my house, and then they sweep me over and there's a lawsuit?
Well, like, it's really, really loud, and I can't live in my house anymore, is that?
Right, so they're, he's nervous about signing the agreement, and, so my only suggestion to him was, you know, go get consultation from a professional, or go to a, um, a land use attorney, or go to a, a realtor that specializes in anything like with development. I said, and, and maybe get together with your neighbors and make sure you keep your communication open between your neighbors, that you all talk, don't let them divide you. And, I said, maybe you could pool your money and get that road graded. Because right now, they have to go along this road that's all washed out, horrible, trying to get to.
Because of the K rails that the developer.
Because of the K rails, yeah, they closed off several points.
So is, I, does anyone have, uh, uh, access to, or talked to an attorney? Um, I had some property, or my family had some property down Riverside County, and, uh, that same situation. The lawyer told us that if they have an easement to go across your property, that's fine, you have no liability. They have the obligation to maintain it, they have the obligation to grade it so that their car doesn't roll, and if, you know, if they do something like that, then you're, it's, it's their easement, so. So, that's what the lawyer told us, I'm not a lawyer, I'm not saying that's what applies here, but in Riverside County, that's how it works. And so I, I'm just, I'm confused, if this is what the developer is telling this property owner, and he's blocked him off, because he's worried about liability, I don't understand that they're there, because when I was in a similar situation, the lawyer told my family, it ain't a problem, because it's their easement, it's on your property, you have no liability, they have the liability to be taken.
Well, it's not a, not a formal easement, nobody has a, um, paid work on it, it's prescriptive.
For sure.
They've been using it for years and years. But, the, I think the developer's marking it off, because they don't want anybody driving across that property. And, I kind of get that, but, it's almost like they're just sort of putting a squeeze on these people. Seems to me like, you know, well, we're gonna mark it, they put the K rails there, but not crossing the road, but they put them there, like, hey, here they are.
So they're not blocked off yet?
No, they are now, they are blocked off now, they put them in place. But they, they put the K rails there, but they weren't across the road, they purposely put them there so that the homeowners knew they were getting ready to block them off. Like, might wanna sign that easement now.
Is the Prairie Song project something that's approved and is a for-sure thing going through?
No, no, it's not approved, it's not approved. That's why I'm thinking, well, why are they putting up these K rails?
Yeah.
It's still pending, it could be denied, right? But this, now granted, the Prairie Song people own that land, they do own it, so it's their property. But, I guess they figured that the homeowners aren't gonna wanna pay to go to court to fight for that easement, which is what we would have to do. Unless the developer says, well, here, there's an agreement, sign this, and we'll let you drive on the property.
But it's got a tremendous amount of liability back on those homeowners. In my opinion, I, I would be finding a land use attorney.
Yeah, I just.
And they're not, they're not able to do that, or not?
I, I just.
And they should do it as a group.
Yeah, they should do it as a group, I, and one, I guess one neighbor's very ill. And, so, yeah, there's just a lot of dynamics there, this person I'm speaking with is, I think is fairly young. When I say young, not sixty, right, so. You know what I'm saying? So, I think, you know, he's got a small child, and I'm assuming he's maybe in his thirties, and just doesn't have a lot of, um, life experience with this stuff, nor would I have had at thirty years old, or thirty-five years old. So, I just keep saying, just, listen, you don't have to have a gun to your head, this is not happening tomorrow, it's not happening next month. You know, it may not even be happening next year. I say, just don't feel rushed, don't feel pushed, don't sign anything without getting an opinion from either a family member, or somebody that you trust, a friend that's, like, experienced in this stuff, or go, need to sit down with a professional, and, you know, take an hour of their time to get, you know, counsel on it, so.
How long has this person lived, uh, there, do you have any idea?
Um, long enough to have gotten a two-point-seven-five interest loan, which should be listed.
So he's been there a while.
Yeah.
Been there a while, well.
But you said the easement is prescriptive, it's not documented from when he bought.
He's been there, like, six, oh, he probably refinanced, he's, I think he said he's been using it seven, seven years or so, but his neighbors have been using it longer than that. So, and five years or more is prescriptive, I think.
That's critical information right there, as far as.
They qualify for the prescriptive, because they've all been using it for.
Because of the time frame.
Yeah. But, anyway, that, that's what's happening, is the developer has now put the K rails in place, and cutting them off.
So, I mean, I, we.
On Tortuga.
We could, we could write a letter to the CEC, we've already come in from this document, you know? And I wouldn't have a problem doing that, but I would wanna see the easement that they're being told, and I would wanna be able to put it in the, in the record, so. It, do you think this person, or any of those people would be willing to?
I haven't had a lot of communication with the other people, just this one person, and I sent him an email this afternoon, and I asked him if he'd be willing to furnish the easement agreement. Um, I do have some pictures that he's given me.
And, and, you know, also the purchase agreement, too, I mean, if he's trying to get him to, it's not necessarily a purchase agreement, but it's a contract to sell if it gets approved or something.
Yeah, I think it was a, a tiered thing, where they give him so much this year, and the next year, they would give him another lump. And then if it got denied, he'd get to keep that, those two chunks, and then they would walk away, in other words, to keep him on the hook, for him not to sell to somebody else, and to only be willing to sell to them.
He needs legal advice.
Yeah.
This is, this is too extensive.
Yeah, 'cause that happened with, um, some people over there off of, uh, Contempt Springs, or, uh, Sospring, I guess it was.
Then tell us you exactly what these other best projects have done, too, they've documented, I'm gonna give you so much upfront, and then, whatever, you know.
And then you play one against the other.
Right.
This one, I'm gonna give you a huge amount of money per year to lease your land, this one, I'm gonna buy your land and give you a chunk and a chunk, and then it's a renewal of the, of the option. It, it's, I, they kind of divide and conquer, is what they do.
Well, at a minimum, I mean, I, I don't, I, I can type, make a motion here, uh, to write a letter to the CEC, but I, I'm not comfortable doing that, unless we actually see the.
Well, how about?
Wa- waiver that they're asking, because I don't know if they're gonna put that in there.
Make your motion.
Continually.
That he would write a contingent on receiving this information from the homeowner.
Okay, so I know that they write a letter to the CEC, letting them know that after residents in the neighborhood adjacent to the Angelino Development wouldn't sign documents, but, so this is wrong, I guess I, I was guessing, uh, age of the, uh.
So with residents, what?
After residents in, in neighborhood adjacent to the Angelino Development, uh, yeah, I, I guess we're, we're, we're cut off, and directed to sign, what do you call it, not a waiver, what is it, a?
An easement agreement with a, a release of liability, that's something like that, yeah.
And now, and now they're locked off, okay, so, um, I'm moving by the letters to the CEC, letting them know that after residents in the neighborhood adjacent to Angelino Development were cut off from their access path, they were directed to sign an easement agreement with a release of liability, and, and tell them that that's underhanded, I guess, or, or, or just let the CEC know. Need a property owner, you provide a copy.
Do we have a second?
Oh, second half.
Any discussion?
No.
All the favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes.
I'm just, I, you know, our town is getting hammered.
I just don't, I don't understand, I mean, we have an easement on hub running, uh, in front of our property. What would happen if I put down K rails to stop everyone from?
People have done that in this town, that's what kills me.
And you, and you're, you know, I'd be, you know, tarred and feathered.
Yeah.
Or you go to court.
Yeah.
And you'll have to pay the legal fees.
Right, it's, I mean, it, it just doesn't make sense, how does?
Did we not have that same situation?
Yeah.
So the house.
You can't find the people to tar and feather.
Yeah. The house behind me, that's at the end of Silver's Fur, um, they actually have a ten-acre parcel, most of it's in the wash, so it's not available or anything. Actually, their usable land is very minimal, um, but, you know, they thought, you know, this is our ten acres, and they were kind of territorial about it when they bought it, and not realizing that, you know, people freely use that for hiking and riding horses, and, you know, right through there. And, um, there was a, an owner that tried to, um, close that off. And, um, there was a, an owner that tried to, um, close that off with, you know, no trespassing signs. And we're like, what are you talking about? What are you hoping, you know?
Didn't work very well.
Yeah, no, but, but they get it now. They get it now, but it's, it's open land and it's, it's, it's sadly, I mean, you know, it's theirs and you pay taxes on it. But you can't fence it. It's in the wash.
Right.
You know, I mean.
And I, I would imagine under the subdivision, you'd be restricted in with it, but any structures in it, so. Cause you guys went through the full track and that process.
Yeah.
Okay, is that it on best update?
That's all we got.
I can't see how there's any left.
Well, obviously they have a very sophisticated attorney staff.
Yes.
They're, they're, these are experts. This is what they deal in specifically.
You think, I mean, they're just bullies.
Well, they're bullies too, but that's base number.
They're kind of just want to push their way around.
Yeah.
That's just the whole status of, we're gonna give you X number now and blah, 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 now on the road. We're gonna keep you on the hook and then.
Yeah, keep you on the hook.
And then obviously they, they know that.
I hope it gets denied so that they're on the hook for all that money that they pay up to people.
I know.
You, you think they would have learned in the Central Valley, pushing their way for the high speed train? And how that ended up for ten years trying to get that property for that train?
Yeah.
But, okay, minutes.
We're gonna table that, right? Um, from the last, I thought you caught, um, two corrections from, uh, Paul creating the fourth meeting six. Okay, so we should probably look at that though before we.
Yeah, we can look at it and then, and then, yeah.
Okay.
Make sure.
For what month or?
For October sixth.
October sixth.
Okay, so we'll do all that in the meeting.
Okay, that sounds good.
Sounds very good. Okay, moving on.
Um, just one real quick question. Did we need to skip number eight? Oh, the general plan too.
Oh, we sorted, moved over it.
Yeah.
Sorry. Sorry. And it's blinding all of us.
Well, just keep talking about it.
I did talk a little bit about it, but I, um.
Good catch, Kelly.
Yes, thanks. So, so this is the quote that they said, they're, they're doing the tune-up to align the general plan with current policies. That makes me very nervous, cause a lot of the current policies are, you know, not, you know, things that we would normally like. They want to put, uh, silver farms in the, in the, um, you know, in the economic opportunity areas of winter upon the, you know, we, we saw it supervisor. Horvath's motion that every supervisor voted in for. So the policies are very, very, the policies they wanna embrace are very contrary to what the general plan says. So it's very alarming, this, this general plan to the prescription, since they wanna change it to, um, it's just bad. So please come to the virtual meeting, December tenth, six to seven thirty. I do not know anything about it. I don't know what they're proposing. They're not putting any information out. They're gonna tell us at the meeting. So please, please go.
So it's, or you said six thirty before, but is it?
No, six to seven thirty. Oh, six to seven thirty.
Okay.
December tenth.
Where?
Online?
It's a virtual one and you have, I think you have to register. We, if it's not posted yet, it will be posted soon, which Jeremiah's, you know, will indispose right now with a, a link to it. So we'll know where it is. I'm just double checking if it has a link. Yep, there's a QR code.
On the line.
Yes, exactly. December tenth, six to seven thirty. Just got that in today.
You know, and there's people in our community that don't have good access. Is it something we could maybe do here too? Hello, Jim.
Um.
Yes.
I guess, I guess she's asking this, for this thing, can the library register? Cause you have to, they give you access. And, and we can, if people don't have good internet, they can come here and watch it on the whiteboard.
My mind is sketchy.
And participate on it. I don't know.
I have to go to Jackie's house.
I, I, I wish people could come here like for this specific meeting or just in general?
No.
Just for this meeting.
December tenth, six to seven thirty.
It's the general plan?
I've got nothing more.
It's county.
Yeah, it's a county gen, general plan, middle plan.
I have to check the calendars to see what's going on.
Okay.
Let me, I'll go check that if it's, um, I would need someone here, one of you guys here to facilitate it. I, I'd reserve the room under you guys.
Oh, I see. Okay.
And, and then we can work it that way.
Can I come to your house, Jackie? Um, I'm actually gonna be gone for some next week, so I was gonna zoom in, so I, I'm not able to.
Usually I have to go to Jackie's.
So no, you can't.
Usually I have to go to Jackie's if I, if I have such a chance.
I can't, I can't be on the date because I have a conflict with another date.
Okay, got it.
I'm over the Atlantic.
Oh, gosh. Really?
The hometown council's gone.
Ah, gee.
Do you want me to check the calendar?
Yeah, maybe not. Maybe not.
Now, let it go.
Cause those two aren't gonna be here.
Yeah, I'll be from the tenth to the twenty-first.
Okay. Okay, and Jackie's not? Christmas marketing cities?
Yes.
Yay.
Roger, we're the.
What are you thinking? They're gonna, what are they gonna tell us in that meeting? What is it? They're gonna tell us the changes they wanna make in the general plan that aren't consistent, aligning with their policies. It's very, for those of you who were here in twenty, between two thousand eight and twenty fifteen, we, this town council and this community worked a lot on that general plan.
You bet.
A lot. I mean, uh, Ray and the Billits and Edie and the whole, everybody, right?
Some meetings that we can.
Many. There was so much, and Mark Herro was up to it, you know, he's doing all of it, and Carl Nadella, and they did a great job. I, it, it, okay, so just so you understand that when the first draft came out, they didn't even mention rural. So this town council wrote a very lengthy letter, many, many pages. And, and we said, several people went down to the hearing, R J went, A J went, Thor went. So a bunch of people went down and, um, and testified before the planning commission. You, you say you're, you're, you say you're, you're at, you're against urban sprawl and you're not gonna have development, well, basically making urban look, rural look like urban sprawl, which we're not. Urban sprawl, rural is defined by being light on the land. You live light on the land. That is not suburban sprawl. That is not sprawl. Rural is not sprawl. We have to get that message into their heads. And, and I'm not, and we pointed out, I, I testified, I said, you haven't even defined rural. So how can you say these things about rural when you don't even know what it is, right? And you're confusing it and conflating it with, with sprawl. Well, that stopped the whole thing. They came back with a whole rural section in the general plan and it was impressive. And then out of that fell the A to D area plan. So, I mean, there was a lot of work that went into that with this community. So, um, I'm very appreciative about what they're doing. So I don't know what they're gonna change. All I know is I'm looking at these motions that these supervisors are passing.
Yeah.
They're complete, the, the supervisor Horvath motion, that was, everybody voted a favor of all five of them. A week earlier, they had certified the E I R for the climate action plan and approved it or, or, you know, did a motion to intent to approve. And everything in that plan and the E I R, all the litigation measures were completely, were good. We ended up supporting that as a council. I don't know if you remember that. It was like two, three, three years ago. The very next week, this motion that they adopted with Horvath undoes all of it. I mean, it was like, you just adopted a motion that's completely contradictory with this entire E I R that you just certified seven days earlier.
I have a question in, like, in relation to conflicts. So if they, uh, flank the, the general plan, what happens to the area plan?
Uh, that's what's.
Cause they're supposed to be in lockstep together, I think.
Yeah, the, the area plan falls through the general plan. And our real protections are in the area plan. You just hit the hammer on the nail. That's why I'm so worried. Because if they change the general plan such that the area plan isn't, isn't consistent with it anymore.
It's like the R E L and the climate action.
A, yeah, that Horvath motion, uh, seven days earlier, completely inconsistent with what they adopted. Certified as an environmental impact report with litigation measures. She controverted every single litigation measure that was protection in that E I R that they certified seven days earlier. Are, are they just impulsive? I don't know.
I think they rely on staff.
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm not over that. Can you tell?
Yeah.
After that, after that motion, the supervisor Horvath's motion got passed, uh, that afternoon, I called the director of that and I spoke with her like, and I said, this is really bad. She was, I, I said, you guys just cert, certified this E I R, blah, blah, blah. She's like, I know. I don't know what I'm gonna do, literally. So.
So is the meeting on the town just focusing on active?
No, it's on the general plan.
And that's the LA County?
No, it's, it's, all of unincor, it affects all of unincorporated LA County. But it's the, it's the big, it's the, it's the big giant, right?
Are there these proposals that we have something to say about or this is?
Well, we don't know what they're.
They're, they're.
Uh, they're, they're moving forward with changing and they're gonna tell us what the changes are. So, and they're gonna ask you for feedback and comments. So.
And they'll give us a day or two.
There's only an hour and a half.
Well, no, actually, no, we're gonna learn it at the meeting. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm.
And it, it's, it's pretty frustrating in these sort of situations where you have to think on your, like, you have to, they'll say one thing and you gotta think fifty moves ahead. Like, how is this gonna mess with the A to D area plan? How's this gonna mess with the R E L? How's this gonna mess with this E I R that they certified for the C A P, the climate action plan that we all supported? I mean, that we, we fought hard on that. That was, we were not happy with it when it first came out. It got much, much better, if you guys remember.
So, I remember those were crazy things that were.
Yep, so please come to that meeting. I'll be there.
Virtually.
Virtually, yes.
It might be a real long time.
Well, hopefully it'll be recorded, you know, and then we can always, let's, okay, let's put that on for the agenda for the next meeting in January. Cause we need to.
Oh, yeah.
Put comments in as soon as possible. So, call it a tune-up.
For some reason, if they call for comments to be done before that.
We'll have a special meeting.
Special meeting.
Yeah. After the twenty-first.
Okay, Dawn's back on the twenty-first. So the general plan tune-up's gonna go on next.
It's a place to go over water there, Dawn.
Not bad for a mill man.
I'll send you, Dawn.
Thank you.
Thank you for the portos.
Yeah. Very good.
He doesn't eat that. That's what he's just eating.
Yeah.
I'll be walking home tonight.
Okay, we were going to table the minutes.
We did, yes.
We decided, yes.
Okay. So as we were rudely interrupted by Kelly. We will go to number eleven, committee reports. Uh, standing education committee, the only thing I got from the school district was the B M pop for Christmas. Okay, the, uh, planning and coordinating.
Okay, a couple of things. So, um, given how many people are reaching out to us with concerns about the Happy Trails, I wanted to ask if we ask for a joint meeting between Happy Trails and Supervisor Barber's office staff? Or, or what, what do you think we should try to do there?
I think we should meet with Happy Trails first and get a, and get a, uh, a good idea of what they want before.
Well, that gal didn't show up. Remember she was supposed to come?
Yeah, she was supposed to, yeah. But the other thing, so here's the other concern. Let me, when we get developers come, cause they're developed.
Right.
You, you can, you can call, call them whatever you want, but they're developers. They're making changes and they're expanding the footprint. They're developing that thing. When we just talk to the developers, we never get the full story. And we often, yes, don't get the truth. Like, oh, yeah, we've got this already, we've got this that. So that's why, you know, we.
Makes sense of what you said, yeah.
Because then what they say is gonna be in front of staff.
Right.
You know.
They'll be.
Less inclined to.
To get to the very first part of this whole debacle is that the county gifted that land to Happy Trails because they were a five oh one C three. And they could gift unused property to a charity, right, under, was it state law or something? Anyway, they were able to utilize this gifting thing. So they gifted it to Happy Trails. The only problem is Happy Trails is only using it three months out of the year. And then they're paying the Pally group to main, not only maintain the facility year round, but then they're going to utilize it nine months out of the year. And to me, that is like, they pulled fast.
Is the Pally group five oh one C three?
No.
No, it's a commercial.
It's a paid, high dollar camp.
They do high-end, high-end's education camps.
We think they're a Palisades. Uh, like, it's a very high-end school.
They, they're, you can find how much they charge. I mean, it's for a week, it's in the.
Can I actually do that?
Well, that's what I'm saying. And, and if it was the reverse, if Happy Trails, they use it nine months out of the year, and then three months out of the year, Pally's gonna, you know, use it and then they have the maintenance contract. I don't know, I don't have a model of that. But I feel like they used Happy Trails to gift the mon, gift the property for free and then Pally's getting the benefit of it.
Yeah.
More so than Happy Trails.
Well, my fear also is if Pally falls through in the future, they can go out and get another commercial venture and say, well, we have this one. We're just replacing it with something else that we may not even be close to liking.
Well, what's bugging me is Pally's not even allowed to operate under the zoning code. It's, they have to get a zone change. It's not, there's like so many parts to this that it's all just.
I'm just, it's raffled everywhere.
Yeah, they don't look the, they don't, they don't look at any of the peripheral like, ooh, small school.
Yeah, I, I agree with you. You know, we should get a meeting with the two parties.
I, yeah, and I was trying to find supervisor Barber's motion. I think the Pally was baked into that motion.
Yes.
Uh, it was in, it wasn't just Happy Trails.
No, 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 it's the county mentioned Pally. Mentioned Happy Trails and laid the whole thing out in that motion that they were going to operate three months out of the year.
Yeah.
That Pally was gonna take over the maintenance for the year and would run a camp for nine months.
Yeah. And let's not forget that they, in twenty-ten, um, the LA County Board of Supervisors approved ten million in upgrading already to it. So it's not just the millions that they gave along with the property to upgrade it. They've been upgrading it all along. And anyway, um, so, I, I don't know how else to attack this. Our, our, our letters have been completely, I mean, completely ignored. Supervisor Barber's office hasn't responded. The Lindsay person hasn't, planning hasn't responded. Nobody's responded.
I, I have a question. Uh, because this actually sprung from, I, I believe, a state, um, law where the county could gift unused property. I think that was a California thing. If you look back at the motion, it says, under what the, under what state of, uh, or assembly bill that was, that they could give property. Um, then why not involve Suzette Valideras? She's very reactive. I mean, she.
So, I mean, yeah, I, yeah, I, well, I don't know.
I mean, because it's an abuse. It's an abuse of the law.
But, well, I, I could, I, I don't know if it, I mean, county clearly feels it's not otherwise than it done it, but I, I don't disagree with you. I just don't know.
And when you read it, you see that.
Oh, I know. It was a shocking.
They can gift it to a five oh one C three, but five oh one C three is not the primary use.
I know. It, it seems very.
Like a bait and switch.
Well, that would have to be, having that discussion would have to be separate with just county staff for us to understand.
Right.
But I mean, so let me ask you, if we got the answer back, you know, like just be watermelon watermelon, like do not hold water. That's the only answer we're gonna get. I mean, I, I don't know if it could be unwrapped. I, I don't, I don't know. I don't.
Yeah, I mean, are you saying, I know you're worried about the, the water, uh, consumption, the septic.
I'm worried about the water, septic, access, emergency, uh, ev, six hundred kids.
Right, yeah.
Well, I don't know what it is. That's what, that's what they told us. That's what the Happy Trails people told us.
Yeah.
I don't know what it actually is now. When I told that, we told Mr. What's his name? Uh, Mr. I can't remember his name, it was Supervisor Barber's office. He goes, six hundred people? I didn't know it was that much. I'm like, okay, well, this is their presentation and I forward it to him. And he didn't seem very happy about it. So, what's his name? I can't think of his name. Anyway.
Nick, um, Anish?
No, 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 it wasn't Anish. No, Anish had, by that time he was way, he's still involved in the, the fire stuff, recovery. All right, so, okay, we have two different things we could have. We wanna get into legality or understanding what went down. That would just be the Supervisor Barber's office.
Right.
Which they made of it. But if we, I, I, I don't know. I, I, it would be interesting to know, but I, I. Which they made of it, but if we, I, I, I don't know, I, I, it would be interesting to know, but I, I don't know what we can do with it. I don't know, you know.
Who would we be asking for at Supervisor Barber's office?
I don't know.
If we wanted to meet with them first, or?
I don't know. We start, it's a chat.
And one of the emails we've been receiving, haven't they been about them doing illegal work there?
Yes. Yeah, but unpermitted work, stop work orders, they have, they've been covering up stuff, they've been doing a lot of excavation, and none of the.
Without permits.
And, and the septic system, and the treatment system.
So was that not being somebody like Dan Geringer?
No, it's all Public Works, I don't, well, that's another thing, I don't understand how they're doing any construction, because as far as I know, they're still going through the, the S C A site plan review process, unless, unless that got rubber stamped, of course, we'll never know about that, so, I. I appreciate what you're saying, we, I just don't know if we're gonna get, if it'd be something that, it'll just be like, it's because X, Y, Z, and then we'll just like.
Yeah, because that's certainly not the complaint, that it's primary, I see what you're saying, the, the primary complaint is that so many people egress water.
Zoning.
Zoning.
Pally's not even allowed.
Yeah.
Well, we almost have to simplify it, that's to, we're starting with Barber's office.
Yeah.
And just.
That's for a meeting with them.
Yeah, and start there, and then see where we go from.
Oh, we've got N O Bs filed on this already.
Well, I don't know if they're N O Bs, they're, I, these people, a bunch of residents in the area have contacted us, and they're saying different, using different terminology, so I know they're not like, getting together and all sending the same petition to us, right? They're saying, speak, saying different things, uh, or saying things in different ways, uh, they're saying stop work orders, so I don't know if an N O B is a. And I don't know, I, I haven't had a chance to go to Public Works and pull, because you can pull permits and see what they're doing up there. We can do that, I mean, I, I don't know what I'm gonna.
Can you find them on Epic LA? Could you find if there's permits on Epic LA, isn't that supposed to be public posted?
It's not very efficient.
Probably not, not necessarily Public Works permits, but regional planning permits.
But Regional Planning, Tina Carlon, should be able to.
Yeah, well, we know that they're going through the S C A site plan process, we know that, uh-huh, we don't have access to it, we can. There's just so many things to do, we can like, submit Public Works Act requests, we can drive up and just literally pull permits, you know, um. Hugo, or whoever, will help, he's great, Hugo's awesome, we can look at permits, but, um.
Yeah, I think we should just keep it simple from the beginning, and just meet with her, and then decide where to go from there.
Do we need to do a motion on this, I mean, we've already moved to engage on it.
Or do we just tell Chuck who's sitting right there?
Well, I'm willing to supervise her, but I don't know Chuck.
Yeah.
But Chuck gets things done.
Yeah, but we want to, we need to also be specific on what we want to ask them, I mean, maybe we don't want to run off half-cocked and, and, uh, uh, just accept what all these residents are telling us without going up there and pulling the permits and taking a look.
I guess I'd like to run up there and take a look at the permits.
I, I, we'll not be able to do that before Thursday, let's just, it's just, I, I've got too many things to do tomorrow.
Have to do it before Thursday?
No, 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 I can go up, I can't go do it before Thursday. Thursday, the earliest I can be able to do it, is what I'm trying to say, so.
I have Keno tomorrow.
Oh, so we might not.
I'm, I'm gonna fight through it, I'm, I'm doing Keno tomorrow.
Okay, well, then we can.
And then I'll, I'll tell you if I survive.
Then I'll tell you. Okay.
If I did, I'm going to see Tina and Hugo.
Okay, so then let's do this, uh, let's see what we can find, but not the permits. And then if it looks like there's some there there.
Then schedule making.
Request, well, we can't schedule the video, we can just ask for it, we'll see if they answer.
Yeah.
What about Josie, in Public Works, would she be able to give you?
Yeah, the, the permits should be up there, that, you know, you want to look at the, you know, record, you know, maybe not the paper, but, yeah, they, they should be able to.
Hold it, what they, blah, blah, blah.
Where it was supposed to be, what actually happened.
Yeah, so I will need an answer.
Okay, so, okay, all right, so then.
They can text me now.
So, do we need a motion to write this letter? If, if, if it pans out, we're gonna write, request a meeting, do we need a motion for that?
No, because we had one prior.
Because we've already been up to our eyes.
Okay, next, all right, housing ordinance update, that is going to the Planning Commission. Hundred sixty-one page ordinance, I managed to get through all of it this afternoon, rudely. I just skimmed it for stuff that is important, and there is one, it's good, there's a good thing. They are now removing townhouses as an allowable use for the C U P in the Ag Zone, which is great, because if you remember what they were originally going to do down at Thousand Trails, it would be a bunch of townhouses, so now they're not allowed, if, if, when this goes through, I didn't see anything else that is problematic. However, there is a, there is an error that they didn't catch, they need to revise section twenty-one sixteen oh one five page three to refer to set section D, not C. So if we do comment.
It's true.
If we do.
Language.
If we do comment, that would be it, I, and it could be just, just an email, so, I don't know that we need to.
We need one of those sign people.
I just, I wrote it out so I would get it right. So, that's the only thing I would recommend that we say, right, I, that would just be a quick event, so we can, yeah. And the third thing on planning, availability of people to meet with the Department of Public Works for the Santa Clara River Watership Plan. They have offered December eleventh from three thirty to five thirty, um, I think it was a virtual meeting, right?
I.
I, I better double check, shoot, I have it up here, all right.
I, I want a week, a year, everything happens that week.
Yes.
I know.
Yeah, I think it was a virtual meeting, I did write it down, but, um, so, because I'm gonna be on the road too, right? So, so December eleventh from three thirty to five thirty, or December seventeenth from twelve to two, or we can ask for a later date. These are just their dates, they also said December sixteenth, but I, I can't do that, because I'm gonna be in a year.
The only way would be, is, you know, to include myself, but maybe we have, yeah, for New Years.
Okay, so.
I don't know.
Why don't we just ask for after New Years?
Okay.
Okay, so, all right, let me write that here, ask for after New Years.
Ask for a date after.
Twenty twenty-six.
In January.
Okay, that's it through planning, that I.
Okay. You sure?
Yes.
Okay, we'll see, S B, Jeremiah's gone for social media, Pam?
Nothing.
Bank account or no news?
No news.
Nothing in the bank.
The bank account was a little low. Yeah, no, I don't have anything.
Kelly, community?
Nothing.
We, we're doing that in January anyway, aren't we?
Trails, open space.
Okay, uh, Trails, open space, okay, uh. We had the offer from the U S Forest Service to do a presentation, dude, is that something we would want to take up on them, or maybe we can just recommend it, you know, put them in touch with the A R T C, and have them do it there at that meeting? It was nice of them to offer, I want to acknowledge it, so.
I agree, it was very nice of them to offer.
It's a justice.
And it would be something, and it would be global, um, for all the communities.
Yeah.
It's not just us.
Right.
Yeah, so that would be a good thing.
The A R T C, yeah.
Yeah, okay, it's, it's Justin, Justin Seestran, he's the Forest Supervisor.
Yeah.
Right, anyway, okay, so.
Yeah.
Offer to A R T C, okay, all right, that's it for that.
And just thank you very much.
Okay, utilities, Margaret's phone.
Okay, yeah, I've got some utilities, all right, now, availability during December eleventh to eighteen to meet with Water Works District Thirty-seven, and Regional Water Quality Control Board.
Does it make me have them in January?
Well, we're gonna date together.
So this is a different meeting, Water Works District Thirty-seven to meet with L A Regional Water Quality Control Board to talk about water quality, high concentration of nitrates in campground areas, the high concentration of water, the cesspools. They've asked us, is there any time between December eleventh and eighteenth?
I think they're just trying to accommodate people before the end of the year, but you don't, they won't be happy if you say, well, how much?
Yeah, because this is a very important issue, because, it's pretty, they're gonna come after December day to the rest of the act.
Cactus Creek down there, plenty of that.
Right. Yeah, so, okay, so ask for January?
Yeah, or can they meet me in Berlin?
Yeah.
I will.
Yeah, the, the discussion would have to pertain solely to well protection, not D M D L, that's the septic things, these are the conditions. And the sources to be discussed would be Delta, Thousand Trails, the rehab, K O A, and Cactus Creek, okay? Those are the ones we've been.
Yeah, we.
Okay, so January, all right, okay?
Okay, my laws, Kelly?
Oh, we are, did those, it's not time to look at them again.
Okay, uh, June, emergency response and disasters?
They, they haven't put up any, uh, cert mean, since they, they discontinued one right on the date of the class.
Yeah.
But they didn't give any reason for it, I'm not sure, maybe all these things going on in the fire station fire and everything else, it can't be, and I deliver the question. Last year, you know, I sent out the Christmas cards to the government offices, would you like me to do that again?
I didn't hear what you said.
You know, like, reading cards, you know.
Send Christmas cards to the government offices.
From the Town Council, I don't, it's our first name when I signed it.
Yeah.
I mean, just keeping it that way, because we're always in contact with them.
And showing that we care very much about them.
Okay, thank you.
Bless their hearts.
That's fantastic.
Okay, Pammy?
Just to most circuits. Wait, wait, I, uh, response, is anyone interested in working with the UCLA student? They, they want to speak with a couple of people, sorry. Okay, calm down.
What do they want to speak about?
I've put it under emergency preparedness, it said fire.
When, when, when do they want to meet?
Yeah.
Uh, I don't know, I'm agreeing, but it could accommodate your, this is a Zoom session, so.
I don't mind speaking with them, but I just don't know what issue they want to speak about.
From what I read about, the UCLA is doing the paper of fire emergency response.
Oh, that one, oh, okay, I, I can give you that, you want to join the.
Well, I, or move to somebody from the community, maybe one person from the council, or one person from the, I, I don't know. But it has to be somebody who's experienced a wildfire.
It's a wildfire.
So they want wildfire experience. Jeremiah, if you.
He could probably be the one, because I've never personally experienced.
Exactly.
Is this why they love it through the eighteenth, is that when they're?
No, there's no date, they just. So, I think it was.
We're booked.
Yeah.
So, Jeremiah, if you can, I, I can do it, I mean, I've.
Well, we'll ask him for Jer, we'll send an email to Jeremiah, I'm sure he won't lie, he's not here, so we'll give it to him.
And it's for wildfire characters, is that what it is?
No, it's just experience with.
Oh, he's great. Let me just make sure in the back you see this.
I can tell him how they gave me firewood on a, uh, on a S B S.
Right, and this is.
And one gallon of water.
Yeah, one gallon of water for, you know, three horses, three dogs.
And a blanket, so I can sleep in my car.
And, and a lecture.
I've been in my car for a while. We received an email from UCLA student researching on infrastructure and resources, shaped wildfire preparedness, evacuation, and recovery across Palisades, out to Tina and Acton, who is hoping to put together two brief Zoom interviews with the locals who have experienced the wildfire, or, uh, you know, town council members, uh, and the information gathered will be used in a final paper that provides policy recommendations to. So it's a double edged sword, you gotta be careful, so.
I know.
Not very confidential, of course.
If Jeremiah were involved.
Jeremiah.
Okay.
I want to add something to the emergency response thing.
Yeah.
Um, I got a notice about our trailer that's parked down here at the, not the fire station, but the Forest Service.
Okay.
So, I called Mike Hughes, because I couldn't remember what was actually in that trailer, so I've set up that meeting sometime in January to meet with Mike Hughes and Cal Oglesby, we're pretty sure that everything that's in our emergency trailer is probably expired. So, I will go do the research on that and get back to the council, but, um, Mike, Mike and Cal were involved from the very beginning. So, but we do have a trailer that the Town Council owns.
Can I make, make, make a comment?
Pardon?
May, make a comment, uh, when we in our certain training, the, uh, Aquadosi, the Town Council and, and their trailer, uh, our instructor, the, um, she will, um, go over the trailer, what is needed, and check what's, what's there, this exploration, but this was through them.
Good, we have no money, so if they're.
And she's doing this for free, because the, and then she's providing things that you may need in the trailer also, that's how I actually.
Right, and, and we have no access to the, um, Forest Service, so Mike and Cal both have a key or a code to be able to get in there to get the trailer. So they'd like to pass that on to one of us, so that we can access the fire station, I'll, I'll take that. I'm in the fire station, what we get?
We saw firemen.
Well, I wasn't thinking that, I was thinking. Sure.
Yeah, tell somebody we do that.
Maybe just somebody that'd be interested in what's in there.
What if there was a fire, there would be a high probability it'd be safe?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, thank you, Carrie.
Oh, is that what you were thinking?
I was thinking, thinking for myself.
Okay.
So, Chris Udell, acting, or official City Town Council, he was the one that was telling me that he got some sort of grant money or something to fill their trailer, and their trailer got placed back at the Aquadosi Community Center, because they had taken it away.
Well, thank you.
And then they took a crane and they put it back in, and Chris said they got some sort of grant money that's sitting aside to refill it.
Oh, that's right.
I just talked to him at the Aquadosi tree lighting.
Well, I hope then get a hold of Chris, that's all.
Yeah, I never worked out the grant money.
Right.
Yeah.
Because of course to them, our stuff is all expired.
Yeah.
Okay, Pammy, you're up.
Yes, are you sure?
Yeah. I just need to define reunification slash illegal dumping.
There we go, because it is illegal dumping, which I just found out, there's a couch on Red Rover that we have to go pick up. Um, so, you know, we do our normal, regular cleanup or whatever, the chickens were the big thing this month, yay, um, but we'll continue to do what we do, and, you know, when there's illegal dumping, I mean, a lot of people in the town will call us and say, you know, hey, there's this over here, sometimes it's like above our pay grade, like, the illegal dumping that was going on with, I still think it's Palisades Fire and, and fire stuff, but I have no proof. Um, you know, so they call us on that, we're like, eighteen truck loads, we're not picking that up.
No.
But, um, but anyway, so, our regular dumpsters that we fill every week, they still go out, they still, we still fill three dumpsters every week of illegal dump trash. And, I mean, and they're big, they're four yard dumpsters, they're big dumpsters, and so we're still filling them up every week with, you know, roadside trash, but. Illegal dump stuff, um, a, a lot of construction trash, a lot of just toilets, bathroom remodels, kitchen remodels, you know, one off, you know, somebody did a bathroom, one of them gets dumped on the side of the hill, somebody did a kitchen, it gets dumped on the side of the hill, a lot of that stuff. That's, that's our biggest cleanup stuff right now, the onesie twosie couches, you know, or mattress here and a mattress there, not, not huge, but the, the construction dumps, and they're, like I said, they're individual, it's, it's gotta be a single contractor redoing a bathroom or something like that. So, but anyways, other than that, we will continue to clean up and, you know, we have a good time.
Especially with the margarita place afterwards.
You know what, that's, that's the treat, I mean, people donate to our, our source, um, but that's what the guys want to do, they want to go grab a pizza and a beer afterwards, or they want to go grab tacos and a margarita, it's like, that's what we use some, uh, some of the money for, you know, because that's, that's all they want to do, they just. Yeah, I mean, granted, we use bags and goggles and gloves and zip ties and all kinds of stuff for our trucks. Ban, well, okay, yeah, there was that one incident, but, um.
There was that one time.
Yeah, her husband took a board to the head, it was not pretty, I nailed it.
I haven't already done to him, so.
Yeah, it was pretty nasty, but I feel if we're not bleeding by the end of the day, are we even really trying? Somebody, there's always some sort of small casualty, but anyhow, um, but yeah, that's what we do, I mean, that's, and the guys, we like it to look nice, and we like to.
It's amazing, though, thank you.
Thank you.
And I mean, they took the, uh, that blue light that was there, because there was apparently a big crash and that, waiting again, people started to try to stay again.
Where?
Well, no, the blue light's still there.
Yeah, it didn't move down to Ward Road.
No, there's two, there's two.
But they took out the one.
No, the one down at Ward Road was a brand new one, we had it brought out.
No, that's a brand new, but the one that was three bay?
Uh-huh.
On ramp?
The upper one's gone.
Is that when they, is that when they just took the guardrail out and took that one out at the same time?
Yeah, we saw that, that's.
Well, the guardrail damage is still there, but they took the camera.
Okay.
A car went, all, all the way down there.
I saw the, so I saw the guardrail, yeah, but I didn't really. Yeah, but I didn't realize they took the camera with it.
Yeah, they took the camera.
I noticed it within the last five days or six days.
Was the camera part of the, part of the wreck? Is that why the camera's gone?
The car.
I don't know.
I don't know.
Oh.
We don't know, just thinking.
The one, the one on lower ward i- is still there.
Right, yeah, that one's still there. I'll find out if that, maybe it was part of the wreck. Cause they moved it a little bit, but, but the guardrail seems like they couldn't put the camera there, so I don't know, I don't know, I'll find out. I'll find out.
Since they put the camera on Ward Road, have, have you had to go back there and pick anything up?
Nope.
No, there hasn't been anything there.
We go by and wave to them sometimes.
What I was gonna do today, I was like, thank you.
Yeah, and we go by and wave to them. There's actually a website, and I, I can't find it, but it's those cameras.
Oh, really?
Yeah, there's a website, so you can go see with those cameras, with their. So.
I gotta eat dinner.
But it, yeah, so I'll find out what happened to the camera.
Can you forward that spring to me, someone?
Very good.
Wait, 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 one sec, uh, I understand Cal Recycle is having another public meeting to try to. Improve regulations on all the silly dumping stuff, Chuck might know more about it, I think.
No, I don't know.
A R T sec, let me see, I, I just remembered.
So they're still filling the mulch stuff, I think they did a, they're, they're gonna make a second batch of, third batch of revisions to the mulch ones. Is that what you're talking about?
I. I don't know, I just, I accessed something from A R T C really quickly, and, and, you know, the word mulch is.
Yeah.
Cause the, the dumping now is not the mulch, it's the.
No, it's not.
Toxic stuff.
Knock on wood, I think maybe the changes in those and the news articles and the lawsuits and the county order and brought them. Might have changed the big, the big companies, uh, I could, for left, third party's getting their mulch and taking it in those way.
Yeah, here we go.
Mulch hasn't been.
Cal Recycle will be doing a follow up meeting on illegal dumping in January, T B D, the Davis T B D. This meeting will involve the L E A, which is the lead enforcement agency, which we were in the hard way, is for the people who carry the trash, it's Department of Public Works. For the land where it gets dumped, it's Health Department, so that's.
No, it's still, it's still poked up.
Well, that's not the email I got from Cal Recycle two months ago, saying. Illegal dumping from the, the tr- transport, Public Works, because they're the ones who issued the franchise ordinance, they're for franchise.
See, we don't have a franchise, so.
Well, contracts, I, I should say.
That's if it's a franchisee who's doing the dump, these are not franchisees.
I, I, yeah, I mean, these are from the city of LA, so it is Public Works, but trying to get Cal Recycle to understand that, anyway. Hopefully, they can provide us with details of additional efforts that we made since the emergency regulations came in permanently.
And so should the senior, if one of them agreed.
The, the, those regulations were headed with mulch, this came in to November twenty fifth, uh, two day, two.
For what was it?
From A R T C.
Okay.
From those.
Oh, this might be something that she's working on itself, I haven't seen anything like this.
Let me forward it to you.
Okay.
So, anyway, just, just hopefully, we're gonna get some better stuff, so, I don't know. We need regulations, you know, and then we need a, a, an agency to want to enforce them, because two parts to this coin, one coin.
Well, a lot of stuff's happening on most, like I said, and I don't hear new reports of dumping, we've got a lot of properties that have been ordered to clean up, um.
No, no, Public Works just sent that announcement out today, that there's been a significant uptake in, in legal dumping.
But that's, that's construction, and that's on our roads.
It didn't.
It's on that construction tree, it's not the mulch, uh.
It didn't, it didn't, it just said.
I know, but it was still about construction.
So, anyway, I'm just, I'm so. I just, why do people litter, I, I have other words.
Try riding a bike, you see a lot more of that stuff on a bike than you do a car.
Well, that's what we got, one of the guys, he walks five miles a day, and he looks down the canyons, we told him we're gonna break his legs. Cause he needs to stop looking down the canyons, cause that. He calls every day, like, okay, on this canyon mile marker, you know, thirteen twenty five, there's a, a toilet and two cabinets and a bunch of broken up.
Wow.
Tile, and you're like, gosh dang it, you know, but yeah, he walks five miles a day.
I will share this with you. Kim was out, when I was helping her, uh, catch a dog out in the desert, now, it's a little bit past, uh, Pear Blossom out there. And while we were trying to set up a trap, uh, we had to move it because there was a, a three foot tall, six foot radius. Pile of, of mushrooms that was dumped by either a grower or a store or whatever.
Mushrooms.
Mushrooms. Yeah, so we're, now we're driving back home, or I'm driving back home, and I'm noticing here, there and everywhere, just right off of one thirty eight. Not far into the desert, there's all these dumping sites, asphalt, construction material, hat, what have you. And then as I'm getting closer into Little Rock, just the intersection east of Charlie Brown's. There's a corner there, and there's at least six vendors or people with open flames, uh, barbecuing and stuff like that. At least twenty cars there, people there, look like a little town, you know, shitty, dirty, uh, dogs running across the roadway. And as I'm driving almost back home now, I'm just looking at all the trash along the roadside, and I said. We're gonna be that.
Yep.
Yeah.
If we're not careful.
Yeah, we're gonna be that.
Well, it's, it's, I agree, we need, we need better legislators to make better laws to stop this. I mean.
We do.
And I'm talking about state, I'm not talking about county, I'm talking about state, state is a problem.
Well, we should be the public health team, actually.
Well, you know, whatever we can do to help supervise a park or do this, we'll do it, you know?
I don't know, convince the other ones that it's a problem, but it's a problem for all sorts.
Well, I know, and California is such a beautiful, I mean.
Right.
Beautiful state, and it used to be, and instead we can go visit other places and, and it's a little pristine.
Yeah.
Except for Berlin, Berlin's got a track.
Yeah.
We need to collect up our trash, here, take it to their house and drop it off, then we'd get trouble for dumping.
Yeah.
Yeah. We'd get caught, yeah, we'd get caught.
Okay, we're almost through.
We're almo- we're getting there.
Yes, we are.
And, uh, okay, film, coalition? Nothing, okay. Uh, traffic safety, Jackie?
Uh, you know what, I will, you're, who's gonna ping Josie about the red, red sandwich?
I'll, I'll say.
You said you would.
I'll ask.
Okay, thanks, so.
We haven't heard if you guys do it too, so I'll wait.
Oh, we can just go out and spray if we want. I'll get the can right now. You'll spray it, Carrie? I'll, I'll spray it.
I think we figure out eventually, uh, after a few tickets for getting out there.
Well, they can, they won't find me.
I, I found a, I found a no trucks allowed sign on a, on a road outside Palm Hill that nobody knows how to cut there.
Can't, we can't have that, it's a truck stop, I mean, it's like, I don't know how we, anyway.
High speed rail?
Um, as far as I know, they're not doing anything, I missed their last meeting, I usually try to, uh, zoom in on their meeting, but I missed the last one. But I, I don't see anything in print or anything, so.
Yeah.
I.
They're giving a billion dollars a year for twenty years for the state of California.
Right.
I'm finished, and new business. Items for the next agenda would be.
We just put that one on there.
General plan.
The general plan.
Minutes.
And the minutes.
And maybe the election lots of times.
Yeah, the election.
We'll report out if we got, you know, if we get more than two people applying, then there will be an election.
Okay.
So far, nobody has.
And the new launch time tonight is nine twenty eight to ten ten.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. See, uh, well, I am proud to say that we, uh, we survived.
Yes, we did.
Thank you, Don, you did a great job.
What time are we?
I have a spine, so I'm like that problem.